Or if we still are not, if we're, whether or not we're comfortable with that, not just the public hearing, but also the referrals to the county and to the fire department. So we'll just, as we go through this.
I think we should take a vote.
Okay, so can we, go ahead, do we have to vote to declare lead agency?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion to declare the town of Washington Planning Board Lead Agency on the application for the Upton Lake High School site plan?
Is that something that we can decide?
Yeah, and then somebody, anybody can challenge us.
They've, they've asked us.
But they, but they've kind of asked us.
The other town involved has asked us to do it, but we have to accept it.
They can, they can challenge it and take it.
I will move that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So it's unanimous in favor of, of being lead agency on this application?
Did we decide what kind of secret this was, or type two, or type one, or?
We're not there yet, I don't think. So I just wanted to go through, so at what point do we get involved in a, in a coordinated review with the town of Clinton?
Once an application would be made, we also will have to notify them, as Kristen mentioned, so then if they want to be one of the agencies as part of a coordinated review. I do see that the town planner determined that the action would likely be unlisted and Declaring it is fine. I don't believe it would be uncoordinated, but that would be something to determine with further discussions with the town.
Okay.
And then it just means a collective review, but ultimately, the planning board would have the authority under secret and the obligation to conduct the entire review.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'm going to go through the application comments. First was, the first comment was, "Section 2B of the submitted application is missing the zoning district reference and a deed of the subject property was also not provided with the application." Is that still the situation? According to Erin, it is, that the comment had not been addressed and the application should be corrected for the town's files.
I believe the deed was given with Kristen at the very beginning, and they did bring a copy with me as well. Sorry?
The zoning district reference?
Is it on the new set?
This, this was updated from Erin this week, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
So that's an item you'll be adding. The engineer needs to put on the zoning reference for this.
Okay, great, so you'll do that. A next comment was, "The planning board may request information as to the applicant's plans for the existing and proposed to be abandoned house currently serving as the high school building." Is the planning board interested in having information provided about what will happen with the current building?
Yeah. Yeah, and right now, to be honest with you, I think even the school board and the church elders don't know what they want to do with the building. Nobody's really made a decision whether to take the building down, to renovate it, and I think that what they're looking to do there is probably bring in a contractor of myself to take a look at cost of A, taking it down, B, what are the costs to renovate it, C, I think they're not even sure if they're going to renovate it, what they renovate it into. My thinking, just off, off the cuff, is I think they're going to probably end up taking the building down at this point, there's a lot of need for it. But that's the only thing I can give you, really, I don't have answers, I don't think they have solid answers at, at this point. I can, I can press them more forward, see if they have an agenda on that, but.
Could you let them know we're interested?
Sure, sure.
Okay. The next one was, "The applicants represented indicated that the current enrollment of the high school is not expected to increase with the construction of the new building," which I remember from our last meeting. "But your school webpage says, 'The new high school will be able to house more students, feature more classroom space, and have an updated science lab.' The applicant should provide clarification. While all the site's traffic originates from the town of Clinton, there appears to be the potential for increased enrollment, which could increase traffic in the area."
Sure. If I remember, I spoke with Erin about that at the very beginning, even before our last month's meeting, but you recall in our last month's meeting, I figured that it was going to be a possibility of maybe 90. What I did was I took, figured out the, the amount of classrooms, took and calculated the amount of chairs per classroom, multiplied together, and I came up with about approximately 90 people, and I believe I stated that at this past.
90 students, or 90 students and faculty?
I'm sorry, 90 students and then faculty, but it would be about 10 or 12.
Compared to what is their current?
Current enrollment is 31 or 36 students, and it's currently 10 faculty. So they would increase the faculty by one or two, and increase the potential enrollment up to 90.
If they may be using the point of mental classrooms, in other words, students move from a science laboratory or science classroom to social studies or history classroom, same 30 students move from one classroom to another.
May I ask a question? Are there state standards regarding square footage, number of faculties, number of bathrooms?
Yes.
Yes.
All that sort of thing?
Yes.
Very good.
So, and are you, you've reviewed the state standards that would apply to you?
Yes. So we'll get the square footage of the, of each classroom, figuring the amount of potential students that could be in each classroom, we're thinking that, as well as the amount of bathrooms necessary for each student and faculty.
And does the state have supervision requirements, right? And are the parking requirements coming from us, or coming from the state?
Coming from the state as well. For example, there's of course a multiplication of, of one parking space per four students, so we've done that math, as well as we've even taken and included in the elementary classrooms as well that are on-site, as well as the faculty there, and we meet the parking space in the existing, not including parking around the existing high school now, and we, I think the minimum is 55, and we have 63.
So your application to us is submitted as an application which conforms to all state requirements?
Done. I have a question, if you were to renovate the vacated building, and they were going to bring more students in, would you have to then resubmit an application to be able to fulfill that, or could you just add more students?
Yeah, that's a good question. I, I don't think they're looking to, to renovate that building to bring more students in. I think that even, even with what the principal had stated to me, they were thinking 60 to 75 students as their max. I'm the one who's shooting on the higher side, just to be safe for everybody, to make sure that based on the amount of chairs that are potentially getting going in each classroom, shooting for the 90. But as far as the answer to that question, that existed in a high school building, I don't think they would want to, because of the age and what the building is, they want to, I think the whole goal is to keep the high school and the elementary school connected together and have the gym as their main central location for the two of them. I think one of the issues they were running into is the fact that this house is where they were now housing the high school, all the kids now have to walk across the parking lot, there's no real, in a sense, walkways or any of that stuff, so they're walking through mud, snow, rain to get from building to building. I think, there's also a sanctuary, they meet there for prayer on Tuesdays, and, but I think the idea is they've just abandoned one, bring the whole structure together, so it's kind of all connected, easier to manage, I think.
But if you did do that, you would have to do it, you would be doing it in compliance with whatever the state requirements are, right?
Yes, we, we, we ended up doing what you're saying, we would have to go through a whole nother.
Okay.
Set up, yeah.
That's right. So any approval resolution is going to recite that both the new building or any use of the old building has to be complying with all applicable state.
Correct, yes.
If I may, it was a comment made by the town planner, who I'm going to have to speak on their behalf, because we don't have access, about parking, that the plan did show paving, curves, striking, et cetera, but it was not clear as well as the increased enrollment, and a lot hinges on that, like they said, if there are requirements for parking based on the number of students, then that appears to be a determination you're going to have to make before, as well as it's going to impact how they're going to review traffic as well, and parking. So all of those things kind of work together.
Sure.
And it was a comment that, once that's known, if enrollment will be increased, how that will impact buses, parking, and specifically stormwater as it relates to the parking lot and where that's going to go and how it's going to be handled, so that was a comment to take into consideration.
Sure. And so, on this new plan that was submitted in, we have drawn in the parking, and we've added in sidewalks, there's also, we've added in two light fixtures, and basically, we want to be able to have it that it should be that it's a hard surface, paved with parking, with a handicap accessibility parking. And with that, it can create stormwater drainage where you can go.
That was a, a big thing in his comments, he said, "It appears that it will be a hard surface paved, et cetera." And so, if that's the case, that was his assumption, that there would need to be information on the stormwater calculations, water management should be provided on a plan as it relates to the proposed paving, et cetera. So we would definitely need to see that.
Yep.
Yep.
I don't follow. Is your, is your plan going to recite the maximum number of students this plan is for?
If, if you're looking for it, then yes, what we'll do is we'll put in the maximum number, so that we're.
It seems to me.
You said 90, right?
That the parking, the square footage, it all flows from the maximum number of students, if I understand.
And the size of the block a lot, and maybe.
So it seems to me that that would be, what do you think, counsel? Is that an appropriate thing to recite in the?
Yes, and so, and that's what I've mentioned earlier, just with all of these factors, depending on that number, to kind of have it be so vague at this point, it seems as though you would have to make that determination, or alternatively, plan for the maximum, and then ensure that everything under it is compliant as far as parking.
If you're building classrooms for 90 students, you have to have parking to accommodate.
Exactly, it all flows, so I, I, I think you need to state the maximum.
Well, I think that's what I'm doing now.
I thought that's what I heard, but, but that's going to be on your site plan, proposed building to accommodate 90 full-time students at any one time, right? And then, when we, when we review the parking and all of that, and the square footage, and the state reviews, and it's all going to flow from that number. I think that's what I hear counsel saying.
Yes.
So I think that's, that's what.
I've been, I've been saying 90, so what we'll do, we'll make that official as a not to exceed maximum.
Leave that up to you.
Well, your planning is just based upon 90 then.
Yeah.
But then with the understanding that the planning board will review it for 90, so I mean, any traffic studies, any increased parking, square footage, all of that will be based upon that number.
Okay, so next, does, does the, does a state department of education review your proposal to, to determine whether it meets its requirements?
As far as building requirements, no, that's illegal.
No. But in their annual inspections or reissuing licenses, they, they would inspect it, but not because it's new.
No, not because it's new?
Right, really, it's going to be more making sure it's meeting public assembly access and light and vent and egress and all the other.
And egress, so when, when does the state inspect as to all these matters? Annually, or they don't inspect before you open up?
They do an annual inspection.
If it's a new building, do you, do you have to apply for a new?
They apply for a building permit.
It was separate for schools.
But when it's a private school, they, they, they work it differently than.
Oh, is that right?
It's a private school.
Okay, I didn't know that. I thought the state inspected public or private schools to meet its, but I don't know, okay?
Erin made a good point of, when we, when you put the parking plan together with the stormwater, et cetera, that plan, it should be for the total campus, for the total, for the total campus.
Okay, yeah.
Yep, not just for the one new building, because you're making it part of an entire campus, and so it should be, and whatever that number comes, you know, out to be, is it one parking spot for every four students, and then one parking spot for every adult or faculty, whatever that number comes to.
And it should include the building that, that's existing, whether you're going to remove it or not, it's irrelevant at this point, since you can't decide, you should include it.
Correct.
And then, the next thing is, "The site plan currently shows a new access road that allows vehicles to access all sides of the existing and proposed building. Construction on this road will result in some tree clearing and the construction of retaining walls in select locations. The road will also be within 100 feet of the stream pond on the site, but this area is within the town of Clinton." So, you know, that gets into the whole wetlands issue, and I, that, I think probably the easiest thing would be if you could move that road so it is outside of that 100-foot.
Sure.
Wetlands buffer, so that it, it doesn't become a wetlands issue.
Yeah, I would agree. I think that what we designed from the engineer was just from, from a church aesthetics was to try to keep the road away from the building, but I, I'm looking at how it's been drawn out, and it doesn't look like it really has to get more too far.
No, not far.
To dig outside of it, and if that's what's necessary, we would rather do that than deal with any kind of, you know, wetland issues.
Yeah. If, if there's a way that you can move the road so that it doesn't, it's outside of that buffer, that would be, that would be the thing to do.
Sure.
Absolutely. Because you really have to show that there's no other option to get up there into the wetlands.
And my goal was to try to originally have it that we can go full circle all the way around, whether you go to the right or to the left, you can go around the entire building. Right now, I mean, the existing school doesn't even have an access road factor, and when I say existing school, the existing elementary school, gym, and sanctuary technically doesn't have an access road under, so it was more our idea to say, hey, let's step it up, let's take it.
Right.
So if, if we can't meet a full all the way around, then what we can do is at least have it be that you can go around the one side and come and access all points from the one direction.
Right. I think, I think that's what we would like to see, is the 100-foot buffer maintained.
Yep, yeah.
Okay. So you guys will do that, and then at some point, we'll have to decide when the application is ready for a public hearing. And just based already on the discussion that we're having tonight, I don't know that we're ready for the January 3 public hearing, because that also commites the holiday break, and there are a number of things that we would like to see before.
And one additional comment from the town planner related to the height of the building, and with the last meeting, it was discussed whether it was going to be the pitched roof, or a flat roof, or how far in between, but that will require a variance from the ZBA depending on the decision you make, so again, we'd come to a conclusion as to what your final plan would be with that.
I think the idea behind that was that, I wanted to give the option, obviously, I want, want the planning board's blessings on this, so if, if it was, okay, no peak roof, we give a flat roof, and we can get the building in, then we would build a flat, but if they're allowing for us to be able to build a peaked roof, which would be my preference, and I think the, the school's preference, then we would want that, anyway, we're trying to work within what you guys are looking for.
I know, we had talked about, you know, the failure rate of flat roofs, you know, it's going to fail at some point. So a pitched roof is id, is ideal, especially in our climate, but we, we just wanted to make you aware that if you do want to go with that plan, and we're not saying you shouldn't, but you have to get a variance, because it, is it seven feet taller, I think, I can't remember the number, but it's about seven feet taller than what is allowed by height, and so you'd have to get the variance on, on that.
Right. The variance, of course, would be after approvals.
I think you could do it at the same time.
At the same time?
Same time.
Or even before.
Okay.
Because that's just one issue, and the ZBA would look at that, without seeing the rest of what's going on.
Okay, let's figure that out.
So it's really your, your choice, and your reason for it, there's, there's good reason for it. So if you think that gives you a longer, a longer-term plan, it's safer, and it's a better investment for you, yeah, maybe you do pursue that, but that's, you know, that's not us to do that, but that's, you would have to make the application through the zoning board. You're going to come up with a stormwater plan and a parking plan, and then at some point, when you've got, we've got all this together, we do want to have the fire department come out and take a look at egress and access for their equipment, et cetera, so we would want to make that referral. I think we've got around to everything.
And your health department approval, are you doing that separately?
I'm sorry, second?
Oh, you're, you're septic, you're, you're getting?
Yeah, so we've had Ronald or Camell, and we've already did testings, so we're already going through the whole engineering process of that, yeah.
And then Erin writes in here, "A negative declaration appears appropriate for this application, however supplemental information or study not already provided, et cetera, et cetera." You know, we want to look at the increase in traffic resulting from increased enrollment, talks about before that decision is made, so.
Is that a consideration? You're kind of on a curvy road there for things with more traffic. You do things now to manage the traffic?
Yeah. Talking with the principal, and then as far as the whole busing, they, they see maybe, maybe one more small mini bus, but that's about it, as far as traffic, but they're not really seeing a, a greater as far as, as busing.
Is there going to be any significant excavation that requires a lot of trucks?
No, no.
What about the retaining walls and the excavation of that?
The rock here in the back?
Yeah.
Yeah, what's nice is, I mean, the road is set pretty far back, as far as traffic going in there for construction, I don't, I don't see that as really.
Just a tricky stretch in there.
Yeah, I think what Erin was getting at is that currently, there are 30 students, but the capacity for the, the new campus will be 90 students, that's quite a big increase, and it's not just one or two extra faculty, it'd be more than that to triple your current enrollment, state requirements anyway. So we just really want to get a real, an accurate number on what the potential capacity could be.
Of traffic flow.
Well, yeah, and just who, how many people maximally could, could be in there using the new campus. So, and I guess the board at this point needs to decide whether or not we feel ready to, for a public hearing, or if we want to see these answers and these plans back. Andrew, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, I can hear you.
Oh, great. Okay, good. All right, good. Andrew, did you have any questions?
Great, thank you, I appreciate that. I'm sorry?
Andrew, did you have any questions?
No, I think the, I think the order of, the order of approach made total sense. If you, if you believe the maximum could be 90 students, that's what you should plan for. The pitched roof made sense, it's, but should be applied for in conjunction with the building, so I think I'm in agreement with everything recommended.
Okay. So does the planning board feel like we can set the public hearing, or do we want to wait and see?
I would like to wait and see.
You'd like to wait.
I would like to wait and see.
Get a final number.
If the comments are addressed and, and.
Get a stormwater plan.
And determine how many people, all that, and parking lots sized correctly, and the overflow is shown on the map. That work in terms of your timing?
No, this is fine. We're already ahead of the game, so we're doing good.
Okay.
So is there, is January closed, or are you guys still running a?
No, we're here.
January?
We're here. I think we'd want to see your stormwater plan, we'd want to see the student-faculty numbers, the capacity, the max capacity for the student-faculty numbers, and then everything else flowing down from that as far as parking, egressing, ingress, you know, the whole, the whole thing. And then at that point, if, you know, it all looks good, I'd like to make the referrals to the fire department, to the county, and schedule a public hearing.
Great.
And these questions will help you also identify your own thinking, you know, and.
Sure, sure.
So if you go back and people discuss it, you come to some conclusion about them, and then you can just solidify everything, so.
And make for much smoother public hearing. And it'll help too, when you've asked them what they want to do with the building, and that might help them visualize, you know, and.
Would you have any other questions for us?
I think I am good at the moment, where you're pretty clear.
When would you look that, that information in? Next week? Two weeks before?
Yeah. The typical submission.
January 3rd?
Yeah, similar.
Yeah.
I think it's the 20th.
20th.
You have to have it in.
All right. Thank you.
You may as well be one of us.
Just curious, are you guys still doing eight copies with digital as well, or working out first?
I don't know that it's been officially changed yet, but I will check on it and let you know, so.
Trying to stop that.
I think that would be good information.
Yeah, because everything's PDFed and yeah.
No. We're trying to stop doing it, but I don't know if it's officially.
But I'll check, and I'll let you know.
Okay.
Give you an email.
Thank you for your talk tonight.
No, thank you.
It's all good.
Sounds like a fun piece of work you're going to have.
Did you want any questions on that?
I'm thinking about building bigger schools and.
It is amazing how around the East Coast, they double the school size and the number of kids doesn't change. It's district after district, so I, I hope it works for them.
Volutes are increasing up here.
Oh, I see.
It's the mentally, yeah.
Really?
This is the largest enrollment that the city has ever had.
Really?
So people can work from home, people can work from home, and people want to live up here, and so they're making their family lives up here.
Oh, that's interesting. Yeah. All these schools have literally, you know, Indian Mountain, they're all oversubscribed, even, I think Kipsey, they went back into business.
They did, yeah. Yeah, there's so much.
They were out in that.
Yep.
And that's parents' virtual commuting, is that it?
People are able to work from home more.
Wow.
There's more flexibility.
And they're the city only flexibles.
Right, and so their families are here then, so they, okay, so then, are we, are we closed on this?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So the next item on our agenda is the White Rock Farm, 43 Butthollow Road. Is, we have a representative?
Thank you very much.
You guys, we'll see you in Jan, in January, and then hopefully be able to wrap it up.
Thank you. Do you want to do the lot line adjustment first, or?
That would be really quick, wouldn't it?
Is it Brian, you're doing the lot line adjustment? That's pretty quick.
We should have put that on first.
Sorry. I just keep on.
I don't think this is going to take that long either.
Okay, is it?
No, I don't think so. Okay.
So my name is Elliot Corla, I represent owners of 43 Butthollow, White Rock Farm, who are planning a single-family house renovation expansion. We're enlarging it from 27, 4 feet, 78 foot, and we're within 100 foot from the public road, and when enlargement is more than 25%. So we went to the ZBA, we got a tool call, and then they requested us send them, there's no environmental impact, so it's a pretty, you know, we're within the historic character of existing building as well. of existing building as well.
And you have a letter from the DLC?
We have a letter from DLC, we have approval from DOH for the.
Anybody have any questions?
Very nice plan. I'm familiar with that house.
It's eighteen-twenty-two that the house was originally built.
Amazing what you're doing to that house.
Yeah.
Yeah, and keeping all the existing and integrating the new, it's kind of, it's fun.
I brought an image just to, to cover up in your presentation.
Has everybody seen it, or do you want to see the?
I saw the ones that you sent around.
Did I match out on your test just?
Pretty.
Give us an overview, would you like to see it?
Yeah, new HVAC on your windows, and they're going to expand, you know, expand this space a little bit.
So this is the, this is the reference plan.
Do you want to just sit at the table?
This is our hundred-foot setback, and a series of images showing existing versus proposed, so this is a listing of us, we're kind of keeping the footprint more or less the same, but squaring it off, you know, making it more symmetrical, and converting the attic space into the proper floor, but still within the high limitations. The side slopes away from the road, so the houses, you know, the, the lower section of the house is not visible from the road at all, this is the view from the west.
It's pretty amazing.
Put sort of a cap on it. I know, as I've just, I've been there, it's, what they're doing is really quite impressive.
Yeah, it's great. So I noticed that the, are you, are you going to pretty much take down all of this house, do this, or?
Uh, no, we, we're really just.
Okay, I see.
We're keeping, yeah, we're, we're taking down the second floor, it's an eighteen-twenty, on record, it's eighteen-twenty's house, but some portions of it are probably even older, so we're taking off the second floor of this section, and kind of just building it up.
Just from my curiosity, I noticed that the foundation there was a stone foundation, are you going to reinforce the existing foundation, or?
Um, there's a section of the house we're not attaching, so we're, we're not enforcing that, but yes, we're, we're pouring, we need slabs.
Yeah, I saw that, I saw that. Through the architect?
I'm their architect.
Anybody have any questions?
Very nice job, very nice.
Yeah.
So, did you have anything? Nope. Well, if anyone has any other questions, I think we could take a vote to classify this as a, under SECPRA. Can I get a motion to classify this as a type-two action?
Motion to classify as type-two action.
Second, Jim.
Second, Jim Cornell, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimously approved.
Aye.
And Andrew?
Yes, aye.
And so. I guess we'll ask Kristen then to make the referral to Dutchess County Planning, to make the referral, and I don't know if we get to get the fire department, since it's existing and not changing much, but I don't think so. And then, I think, do I need to get a motion for a public hearing, or can we just put it on the schedule for January?
Oh, do you have a motion?
Okay, can I get a motion to add this, and get notifications out for a public hearing on January third for this application?
Motion for a public hearing, January third.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So it's unanimously approved. Okay, so we got the res, the secret classification done, and we got it set for a public hearing for January third.
Okay, I just wanted to mention that my owners, my clients, they own lots on either side of the, of this property as well, so just wanted to see if there's any for public hearing, or there's.
Yes, this absolutely, absolutely has to go to public hearing, yeah, yeah. Very nicely done.
Yes.
And the last, thank you. Last on our list, which we should have put first, we, next time, I'm going to, we'll look at that better, because we should have just done this first and got you out of here.
Everyone's going to stand anywhere, is that new protocol?
If you'd have gone first, then everybody would have sat at the table. Yeah.
So we have submitted an application for a lot line change, I'm sure you've, everyone has a chance to look at it, you want to see maps, I have.
I've seen them.
Okay. If you, if you want to, we'll bring them out, so this is all proposed lot line change between land, Randy Reef owns thirty-eight-point-eight acres of land out on Stanford Road, it's in the RL five district, joining that piece of property is land of Ron Gross and Adley Camillo, their property is three-point-five-eight acres, if you notice on the map, they're on the north side of the house, the property line basically runs a foot off of their house. So what is being proposed here is to, Mr. Reef has agreed to convey to them point-one-five acres of land, which would give them, going off the top of my head here, we're going to increase the side yard setback from one-point-two feet to over, I think it's like thirty-six feet, so to give them, they can't even maintain outside of the house without, you know, getting permission from Randy to come on the property, and there's no building proposed here or anything, it's just, you know, a common sense approach here, adding a little bit of land, so Randy's property would go from, you know, thirty-eight-point-eight, and would just go down by point-one-five, and Gross and Camillo property goes from three-point-five-eight to three-point-seven-third. There's not much else going on.
So it's still not conforming, but it's just giving them more space to.
It's getting better.
Get a little breather around the house, okay?
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's no requirement, but it becomes conforming.
No, 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 and they're, they're not constructing anything, so.
This is the easiest one.
I've got the resolution, let's see. Oh, no, that's not it, I've got the other resolution here. Let's see, so we need to, let's see, where is my, I've got every, it's the end of the night, I've got everything almost mixed in. So, anybody have any questions before we proceed? No, okay, so we need to classify this under SECPRA, and it's a, a type, type-two, so we'll classify it as a, as type-two action, and can I get a motion to classify this as a type-two action?
Motion to classify as a type-two action.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it's unanimous, and then we could consider, in that historically, lot line adjustments that don't create new parcels are not treated as subdivisions, and we've, we've not had to have a public hearing, so I propose that we do that for, for this application also. What do you feel okay about that?
Do we need to have a motion to, to raise a public hearing?
I don't think so.
No, because we don't, in this case.
No, so I don't know if everybody saw it, but there is a resolution that Sarah drafted that we could approve, the lot line adjustment, anybody have any questions about that? So can I get a motion to approve this resolution for the lot line adjustment?
Andrew, why don't you second this?
Okay, I've got a second from Andrew Spence.
Yes, second.
All in favor?
Yes, aye.
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 Aye, so it's unanimous? Okay, great, right, sorry about that, we should have done that first.
That's all, it's good, it's, it's all fine. When I have the miler, can I come find you at your office?
You know where I am.
All right.
Walk on out.
I thought I was going to have it today, but Ron Miller wasn't in the board of health on this. Thank you all.
Good night. Does any board member have anything to discuss that's not on the agenda, any items? Kristen, did you have anything for us?
No.
Sarah?
No.
Howard?
Margaret.
Margaret.
Ten minutes, well done.
Can I get a motion to close?
So moved.
The planning board.
Second.
And we're done.
Excellent, wonderful.
Good job, Nicole.
Hey, but who's going to lead January?
Susan.
Susan?
Mm-hmm.
She'll be back.
Excellent. That was great.
Is everybody going to be here January third?
Thank you very much, Nicole.